It is 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 13, 2022. And I will call the continued public hearing to order on the application, the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as The Sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Master and the laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, to construct 136-unit apartment complex for which the Mass Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street, Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021. And I just want, we've been receiving a lot of letters from the public. They're all posted up on the website. And all the materials we've received are on the website. But I just want to remind members of the public that some of the letters have raised concerns about the financial impact to the town for additional services and schools. And under Chapter 40B, the Zoning Board of Appeals cannot take those factors into consideration. So I will not be taking any public comment on additional services and cost to the schools. Thank you. So the first item on our agenda is the connection to the municipal water and sewer. Is there somebody from the applicant available to discuss the reports we've received?
For the record, this is Jeff Engler from SLV School Street. Our, my civil engineer Carlton Quinn is on the call tonight and can provide an overview of the work that was done in general over the last two months. We've worked closely with the town, with Mr. Dam, with Nate, with their consultant, Teta and Howard, to arrive at both the scope and then the activities that have gone on. And we've issued two reports that communicate or represent our findings on both water and water capacity and sewer capacity. So Carlton is, is with us. And I'll just ask him to, as well as Dave Formato from Onsite Engineering, and I'll turn it over to those significantly more capable technical experts just to walk the town through the scope of work that was done and the conclusions. And then obviously would look forward to any comments from Chuck or anybody else that was involved in the preparation of those, those reports. So with that said, Carlton, why don't you kick it off? And then Dave, feel free to supplement it.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
No problem. Carlton Quinn, Allen Major Associates, civil engineer for the project. So as Jeff kind of summarized, over the past two months, we've gone through and did some analysis on the existing sewer and the existing sewer systems in the municipality, obviously on the other side of 128. For the water line, we provided the town's, the town's water engineer, Tatton Howard, a basically a scope of work that we're going to need to do for the elevations of the buildings, the flows that will be required and kind of the length of the pipes that we'll be looking for to extend from the existing municipal system to our proposed system. And the analysis for the water system was basically done by Tatton Howard, who is the consultant for the DPW for the water system. And their findings were positive, saying that, you know, with the extension of the main with certain sizes, that we could provide adequate water to the site through the existing municipal system. And that was summarized in a letter that was issued a few days ago. We did provide an early review to the DPW to see if they had any concerns. And we've also issued the letter to the ZBA, which I think was posted on the website. For the existing water system, we basically, to do the analysis, standard practices, we put in monitors in strategically located manholes all the way down School Street to register the existing flows. I think it was for about two and a half weeks. We took intervals of 15 minutes and measured it 24 hours a day. We took that analysis. We took the existing sewer system. That information was provided by the DPW. We calculated all the flows that the existing sewer system could accommodate. We ran the existing sewer through them and the proposed flows from our site and found there were no issues with the capacity of the sewer in School Street. We have also provided that information to the DPW, and they have reviewed it. And we've also provided a summary letter to the ZBA noting our findings. If there's anything specific you want to go into, I can pull up on the screen and look into it. But we've basically done the analysis for engineering standards, provided that information to the DPW and the ZBA. And our findings were that there was adequate capacity in both the water and the sewer in the existing system.
Madam Chairman, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you, Jeff. For the record, Dave Formato, Onsite Engineering, Madam Chairman, if I may. One other thing I wanted to point out is that there was a question brought up at previous meetings relative to the means and methods of crossing Route 128. So as everyone's aware, you know, right now that the plan is to do a directional drill using the, the, you know, Mass Highway, Mass DOT layout as staging areas. And we did discuss with a couple of directional drilling companies, this particular project, providing them specific site plans, elevations, locations, and essentially drilling between the two clover leaves, almost in a slightly diagonal direction, is feasible. We also did ask that, you know, some of these companies could possibly provide some examples of a similar situation. And we got one company, Enterprise Directional Drilling out of Maine, that's done up to 600 and something feet of directional drilling at 12 inches in Rock, Pitts Field, Maine. So they do have the capabilities to do that work. And, you know, our directional drill that we estimate is going to be about a little over 500 feet between the two pits. So we did also close that loop relative to, you know, making that crossing under the highway.
Thank you. Mr. Dam, do you have anything to add, any comments?
Sure. So for the record, Chuck Dam, DPW Director for Manchester by the Sea. As Carlton mentioned, we, you know, we've been working with them to, you know, look at the differing capacities and, you know, some analysis there. One thing that was also done was we did existing condition fire flows on the distribution system. As many people in town may know, we're also doing work in School Street that was planned well before this project that will also, that was also included in the analysis. So, you know, the post-construction conditions. So those are also things that were considered as we went through this process. I guess the, you know, from a capacity issue, I agree that there's likely no significant impacts to our existing capacity or system. Certainly I'll have conditions for, would be permit for, you know, different aspects of the construction. And the size and materials and scope of that work will be something that I will be very interested in. Should we go forward? I don't know if we need to get in that, into that tonight. But, you know, I definitely have thought about that quite a bit. And then for, as far as the directional drill goes, they did provide plans within the sewer analysis that they did for, you know, a, you know, relative sketch on the plan and profile for a directional drill across 128. I think that there's still, you know, significant engineering to be done. I think Carlton and David would agree with that. But, you know, that, that area on the north side of 128 is a considerable, considerable slope from the grade of School Street down to where they would be launching a directional drill. It's also heavily wooded. And there's also intermittent streams and streams within that clover leaf that would have to also be considered, I think, at some point. But that was kind of outside of the scope of what we had been considering in the past few months. So I think that's kind of where it stands today. And certainly if there was, you know, more construction and, you know, the design progresses, we'll be looking at that a lot closer. So those are my initial thoughts. I guess I don't have anything unless there's additional questions or specifics that we want to get into with regards to those things.
I'll ask members of the board if they have questions. John Veneras, should we have any questions?
One question I, I have, and you might not know the answer to this right now, but how long would this directional drilling practice take? Like, how does that impact the timelines of construction and work in that, in that manner?
Uh, is that a question for me or for consultants?
I suppose for the civil engineer.
I'll let Carlton handle that.
I can actually jump in on that if you want, everybody. Again, Dave Formato. Yeah, it really depends on the, the length of drilling that they can do per day. Obviously, everyone probably acknowledges going through rock is going to take a little bit of time. But, you know, you're typically getting 30, 40 feet a day in rock. So, you know, if you're doing, you know, 500 or 600 feet, it's a few weeks worth of work. So it's not, it's not something that is months upon months upon months to do. So certainly something that will be done within the constructs of a typical, you know, infrastructure or a construction project.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim Dietrich.
Thank you. A lot has been said about directional drilling. And just so I can show my stupidity, I presume you are talking about drilling underneath Route 128. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. Second question. The, the path that you drill, will that also be the path for the water line that the city is going to, the town will extend out to the project?
Town's not extending it, Jim. The developer is.
Well, will that be the actual water line? Yes.
Yeah, the, the intent would be to probably do two directional drills, one for each, one for the sewer force main and one for the water main.
So thank you. Appreciate that. No further questions.
That it? Okay, Sean, Sean?
Yeah, I had in that clover leaf there on the northbound side of 128, would there have to be any clearing done for the drilling from the trees and all that that is there?
Yeah, most likely there's a, typically there's a receiving and a drilling pit. But the drilling pit is larger because it stages all the equipment. The receiving pit is admittedly smaller. In this particular case, it would be advantageous to start on the southbound side of the highway because that's an open grassed area where you'd have the drilling pit. So that would be the larger of the two. And then the receiving pit you need access to. So there'd be a, you know, essentially a temporary access cut through the woods to get to it, as well as the pits themselves. They're typically, you know, 20 by 20, something along those lines. So that yes, there would be some minimal amount of clearing related to getting to that site. And then, you know, opening it up to get ready to receive the pipe once it's drilled.
That's all I have.
Okay, Brian?
At the point, I don't think I have questions. Just some comments that I'll probably hold off on specifically the DEP letter dated December 7. So I'll hold off on those until I get to that point.
Okay, James Mitchell?
Yes, I have a question regarding irrigation. Does the applicant have plans to irrigate the lawns on the project? And if so, have those calculations been included in the water capacity for the town water supply?
Yeah, I can answer that. That's a detail we have not yet contemplated. I would say, you know, I would say presumably we would like to have some irrigation system. I'd also say in a couple of other projects, we've done a well on site. So we haven't had to tap into the municipal water system. I'm sure candidly speaking, I don't know what Manchester by the Sea handles that. But I know a lot of municipalities have pretty significant restrictions or restricted altogether relative to use of municipal water for irrigation purposes. But we would first look at possibly doing some sort of onsite well. But if not, we would likely do a modest irrigation system just around the plantings of the building, not the entirety of all the plantings, which, you know, we're, we've selected because they don't need, you know, consistent irrigation like lawn might.
Sorry, this is Carlton. We actually did put a, we, we took the sewer flow and added 10% on it for the volume of water. So we kind of took into some irrigation for the volume. But that, it's so minimal, it wouldn't affect anything capacity wise. It was just a number we added on that's typical, just to add 10% on the store to calculate the water. If the town didn't want us to connect, but obviously that's not an issue. But it didn't really affect the calculations.
Thank you.
Catherine Howe?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is related to the capacity. And if this was covered in the papers and I missed it, I apologize. I did read them. I'm wondering, assuming that this project were allowed to connect into municipal water and sewer, how much, how much excess capacity is left? Like, I know there are other parts of town that aren't currently serviced that would like to be and perhaps should be. And I'm wondering, you know, what, what's left? Like, does this take up all of our capacity? Or is there still more excess left? I'm not clear on that. I don't know who to direct that to. So Sarah, go ahead.
Chuck Dam, I'll have you respond to that.
Yeah, so on the water side, we have a registration with DEP that's capped at 720,000 gallons per day. It fluctuates from year to year. Obviously, in wetter years, we use less water. And drier years, it seems we use more water. But, you know, generally speaking, we're around 600 to 620,000 gallons per day. So we're roughly 100,000 gallons per day short of that. I think the numbers I've seen for this facility were somewhere in the 25,000 gallons per day range. So in general, you know, it's, you're looking at, you know, a quarter of the capacity there. It's similar on the sewer side. I don't have the most recent numbers. But again, we are held to a permit that we have with DEP. And that's essentially regulating the amount of flow that we can discharge at the end of the pipe on the downside of the treatment process, wastewater treatment process. That's generally fluctuates again wet seasons, dry seasons. But, you know, in the neighborhood of 450,000 to 500,000 gallons per day. And our permit level, I believe, is 650,000 gallons today, per day, give or take. I may have that wrong, 630. I have a lot of numbers in my head. But generally speaking, you know, again, we're roughly 100,000 to 150,000 gallons per day below that. So assuming a similar number on the wastewater capacity, you know, 25,000 gallons per day would, you know, be roughly, you know, 20% or less.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, I have another question, if I may.
Sure.
My second question was just related to, it's my understanding that the installation of this new sewer water line is going to be done by the developer. Who is responsible for the maintenance and repairs down the road?
Chuck, do you want to answer what your expectation is as to who will own what portions post-construction?
Sure. So a couple, couple aspects that, you know, it's my expectation that the town will have a chance to review all design submittals, whether it be specifically to DPW or to the various governing bodies, whether it's DEP or DOT or any other permit, design submittal that the applicant needs to go through, that we would have a chance to receive those, review them and comment if necessary. As well as during construction, it's our, my expectation that we would have the ability to have an onsite representative on verifying that the work was done according to the plans and specifications that were agreed to by everybody. That I assume is fairly general standard practice in this, these type of things. On the backend, once the pipe has been accepted or, you know, has been constructed, it's my expectation that all of the infrastructure within the right-of-way, so essentially School Street would be considered town property. And it would become our operation and maintenance. And that would end at a valve that would have been installed as part of this whole construction process at the applicant's driveway. And it's so far been considered that they would have a booster pump station on the water side and a wastewater pump station on the sewer side. Those would be the applicant's responsibility owned and operated. But the, basically, the valves at the street level would, you know, be kind of the differentiation between town property and the applicant's property or, you know, the facility. And so that's, that's my expectation. I don't know that that's been vetted out or, you know, beyond that. But that's, that's what I'm expecting. And so therefore, anything within the town right-of-way and DOT right-of-way would become town property to own and maintain.
Madam Chair, just if I may, for the record, you know, we agree with Mr. Dam's expectations. I think his visions of how things will unfold, both during construction and post-construction are consistent with ours, as well as where the ownership differentiation occurs. You know, I think it would probably be helpful to town council if Mr. Dam, you know, participates and make sure the language in the draft decision would reflect, you know, how he would see that playing out once again, both during construction and post-construction.
Yep, we'll make sure that happens.
Excuse me, Sarah?
Yes, Brian?
Yeah, I couldn't find how to raise my hand. Catherine opened the door, circle back, like Mr. Dam's comments, if you would, both to the DEP letter. We talked about capacity and what's going to be left over after these projects is completed. And specifically, the paragraph where it writes, "The CWMP does not recommend any major sewer extension to any additional areas in the town except for small limited area potential commercial." And then further down that same paragraph, "New sewer connections would be largely limited to existing unsued homes or businesses when the existing sewer service areas." How does, in your opinion, Chuck? Are we servicing, are we serving to masters here?
No, so I think that, you know, that, that letter was written by our representative at DEP regarding our existing consent order. And part of that consent order was referring to a moratorium on sewer connections. You know, the, the initial consent order was drafted and put out in 2013, I believe. Since then, the town has undertaken, you know, a lot of work. But also, you know, the, you know, the main expectation within that consent order was to, to complete a CWMP, which is a comprehensive wastewater management plan. And so that's what that letter is referring to. And so while I do think that the letter was kind of vague in terms of referencing the ACOP as well as the CWMP, if you read the black and white in the CWMP, the limited commercial district, as well as, you know, five or six other areas of town were considered and represented in the CWMP as potential areas that could, the town may decide to extend the sewer. So therefore, I don't, I don't think, and certainly that letter wasn't written with any expectation about this project or any other project that might take place in the limited commercial district or other areas of town. It was more just referencing the fact that the town has a CWMP that does speak to those things and the town ought to follow it, which we, we, we are doing. And, you know, whether this project goes forward or not, it's kind of inconsequential to, I think, that letter and the expectations that DEP has with the CWMP. I can go into more detail if you want. But that's, that's my read of that letter and what it was meaning to do.
Madam Chair, if I, if I would, there's a little confusion on our end. What, what DEP letter is being referenced?
The December 6th of 2021, where they rate eliminated, removed the moratorium on sewer connections.
Okay, okay.
That's the only one we have.
That, that letter was from DEP to the town administrator. I was CC'd on it. But it, it was, you know, based on supplemental submittals that the town, DPW, made in reference to the ACOP, not anything to do with this project or any other project in town. Really, it was system-wide work that has been ongoing for several years.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Dietrich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been getting some interesting comments from members of the public, not in writing, or I would have shared them, just in conversations. And there seems to be, based on what I've been told, a feeling that there have been a number of homeowners and property owners who would, who would be denied hookup to the sewer system and that SLV is gaining a preference over town residents. Would somebody care to address that in clear terms? So the public would understand whether or not this project will be, will get preference on whether or not people who have been waiting for sewer hookups because of the moratorium will now be in a better position to get them. Thank you.
Mr. Dan, would you kind of explain a little bit about the table that's in the CWMP, where it talks about the various districts and whether onsite versus connection to municipal sewer? So that might help explain that a little bit.
Sure, so I'll, I'll do that first. And then I can try and speak specifically about Jim's comment. But in general, you know, our, our CWMP, like I said, it referenced five or six areas. I forget the exact number. But one was the limited commercial district. One, say, would be the Raymond Street area. One would be Smith Point area. One would be Bridge Street beyond, you know, towards, say, Tux Point or Highland Ave, towards the Beverly Line. There's a couple other small ones, maybe Hickory Hill, that general vicinity. So these are all unsued areas in town currently. And the CWMP was essentially looking at, you know, those areas and what would be the impact to the capacity at the wastewater system should those neighborhoods be connected to the collection system. And, you know, as part of that process, they set aside certain flow rates that, you know, may be considered and, you know, should be, you know, generally allowed to connect, you know. And that's, again, that, that letter that was referenced from December was essentially saying like, you have looked at these, you, the town of Manchester has looked at these areas. So keep those in mind as you now lift the moratorium and allow people to connect. And, you know, there, you have a plan in place and you should follow that plan, is essentially how I look at it. Now, that being said, you know, we've been under a moratorium, you know, since, essentially since 2013. But however, it, it has been partially lifted prior to, you know, ever since I've been, I've been in town since 2018. And, you know, ever since I've been here, anybody that has wanted to connect, that is within the existing collection system, has been allowed to connect. And we have a sewer flow permit application that is done when a new house is built on a vacant lot or if a house is demolished and a new one built in its place, if they have existing sewer connection or if they have sewer in front of, you know, the collection system is in front of their street, you know, they have been allowed to connect. So that, that really hasn't been an issue since I've been in town. Now, you know, like I said, the- Now, you know, like I said, the the question, I think, from Catherine was, you know, how much capacity do we have left? And, you know, we have to be very cognizant of that as we move forward, as we allow residents or extensions of the sewer system. We have a finite capacity based on our permit level and treatment process that, you know, can be utilized and, you know, it is finite. That being said, you know, if anything, our flows have gone down since I've been here based on our ability to eliminate infill inflow and infiltration, that's the INI. You know, within the existing collection system. So as pipes age or, you know, the groundwater changes, you know, we might be susceptible to essentially groundwater or rainwater entering our system and that inundates not only the collection system, but also our capacity at the treatment plant. And that flow is essentially counted in our permit. And so therefore, if those numbers get out of control, we will find ourselves back in a consent order or another moratorium where we're not allowed people to connect. But at present, you know, we have a plan in place and we continue to do work on our collection system with or without SLV or any other connections or extensions that, you know, we are required to do and we will continue to do. So I hope that answers Jim's question, but, you know, if if people that are within the existing collection system would like to connect, there's nothing stopping them. All they need to do is fill out a permit and contact my office. If there's people that would like to extend the sewer and it becomes a town extension, not a developer or anybody else. You know, then that would be a town initiative and it would be subject to town appropriation and water and sewer rates and so on and so forth. Currently, you know, that has not been expressed interest in, you know, whether it be the the town at large, the finance committee, the selectmen or select board. So but that's certainly something that may we may choose to do in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Formato.
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on on everything. Chuck just said it's important to recall that the CWMP is approved by the state specifically identifies the area that this project is in as is should have 31,000 gallons per day of capacity at the wastewater plant reserved right for now and then a potential to go up to 62,000 at full buildout for the entire town once everything is connected. So there is actually capacity already set aside in your own CWMP for this project in terms of, obviously, the flow is about 25,000, so 31,000 was set aside. So it is important to understand that that's the the capacity that would be tapped into. It's not above and beyond that. It's in it's certainly the CWMP considered all the other areas of town that could potentially be sewed and assign them potential capacities for planning period, the current planning period as well as future buildout. So so that has been already vetted by your consultants on that end. And then also, I think, just to read it with what Chuck was saying, the any any CWMP or any sewer system certainly accounts for any places where sewer is installed. Any vacant lots or potential houses that exist that may have been septic but aren't connected, that that always gets flow allocated towards it in the event that that parcel gets developed or a septic system fails, you know, they typically require to connect in. So as as Chuck mentioned, if if someone who's currently could be served by the existing sewer system wanted to connect in, that there is capacity already baked into that entire collection system and treatment facility to accommodate those flows. You know, as as a matter of standard practice.
Thank you. Mr. Zahn. John.
Yeah, hi, sir. Yeah, I had had another question that got kind of brought up. On the water main, if we're extending it over, would there be any need to add additional fire hydrants along that route? And if there if there are, would those affect the water calculations?
Do you want me to answer that, sir?
Sure.
Well, you know, I think the they the applicant will certainly be putting additional hydrants within the run. I think it was recommended in the Tannen Howard study every 500 feet. So, you know, the spacing is sort of, you know, where it makes sense, but, you know, as a rule of thumb, 500 feet makes sense. So there there will be additional fire hydrants that will be required beyond what's on the, you know, onsite. I'm not sure what they have onsite. But tho- those don't affect the calculation for fire flow or available capacity. The capacity is the capacity and whether you're hooking up to a hydrant, the base of the hill, the top of the hill, that's the capacity.
And I have one other quick question, sir. On Mr. Angler had had talked about on other sites and that that they have trailed wells to help supplement for irrigation. Those aren't on any of our plans or anything. And if the if that was to be a consideration, would they not affect the groundwater supplies and all that in those pool areas that we're concerned about?
Can I answer that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
You are correct in that currently we show no irrigation well on our site. So where do we where do we want that? We would have to come back to this board with the modification request for the permit and and locate that well on the plans. And and we would also answer those questions, but there are different level of stand, different standards when you're using water for just irrigation as opposed to consumable water. But you are correct that it's not shown on the plans. Frankly, we haven't looked into it. It's way down the list in the import compared to other things. But we would need to come back to the board with the modification request for that irrigation well and the board will review it at that time.
Thank you. Anything else, Sean?
No, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Dan, did you have your hand up?
I did. I it's, I don't think we need to get into it, but I would just recommend that there not be any consideration for irrigation within the, you know, potable water system. And I would recommend that they, you know, since this is sort of a blank slate, they look into roof leader, rain capture onsite and redeploy that as a means of irrigation or any other alternative besides portable water because it seems unnecessary at a planning level. But that's just.
We would agree with that.
Now, I have the concerns regarding the complexity of this directional drilling, having to get permits from the state to go under Route 128, et cetera, and how big the project will actually be. So my concern is because it's somewhat of an unknown. I would like to consider imposing a requirement that the infrastructure of these pipes up to the valve at the bottom of the driveway is completed before any earth is touched on the site. We don't want to be in a position where blasting starts and then there's a problem with the municipal water and sewer connection. Do you have thoughts on that, Mr. Angler?
Yeah, I don't think I don't think we could agree to that. And I don't think that would be, I mean, the we we we're not going to be able to connect to the system until we have, you know, approval from the building department. So I think it would be unusual to to put in the entire infrastructure of the water and sewer before we touch the site. I I've never seen that before. And I don't think that that would be something that we would be comfortable with. I mean, we would we would. It's difficult to work in a linear fashion like that. We have different the the people doing the site work are not the same people doing the work in the street. Would like to be able to do those things concurrently. It would reduce the length of construction of this overall process. I think there's other ways that you can make sure your concerns are addressed and preserved relative to us not being able to tie into the municipal sewer water or or water or sewer until we've hit certain milestones. But to say we have to put in the entirety of the infrastructure before we can move dirt on the site, we we would not be comfortable with that.
Okay, we'll have to talk about it some more as a board because there's lots of concerns raised. At this point, I will see if there are any members of the public who wish to speak strictly solely regarding the connection to municipal water and sewer. Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Dan Hill. I'm an attorney representing the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. For the board's edification, I did submit a letter on April 27th addressing these issues. So I've been waiting three months to provide my comments and to ask some questions. So if you indulge me, Madam Chair, I've got several questions and comments to run through and I'll do so as quickly as I can. The first question I had was is was with, excuse me, with respect to the sewer capacity analysis that was done. And we had recommended that the town zoning board engage a a peer review of that capacity analysis with by its wastewater engineering firm. I don't see that as having been done. And I guess the question is, has that been done? And if not, why not?
I can answer that, Madam Chair, because I don't think anybody knows the system better than Chuck or Nate. And they looked at everything very closely. I don't think peer review was warranted on the sewer water at the time.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I was asking a question to the zoning board, not to the applicant.
Apologies.
Then, Mr. Hill, I'll ask Mr. Damn to respond to that.
Yeah, so it's just so happened the the timing of this work was taking place, you know, this spring, as you said, since April. The town was already doing metering in town. And the applicant was able to use our subconsultant to relocate the meters to do the analysis that they presented. We were in contact with Carlton and his crew when they were doing that work. I will say, we we only got the, you know, the same report that everybody else got, you know, in the last week or two, but we have been involved and been able to review the data as it's come in. So I'm I am fairly comfortable with the analysis and the data as presented.
So, Mr. Hill, the the answer to your question is, is the zoning board of appeals in this in this circumstance chose to rely on their DPW department?
I I understand. And I we we continue to recommend that this is a very important issue. We actually have had an engineer review the the capacity analysis in in the last 24 hours. And we think there's major errors in in the in the report. So we we would strongly recommend that the town's wastewater engineering firm, which is already on retainer, be tasked to review this analysis and provide the board with an opinion. I I just want to provide just a little bit of background that the reason this is a big issue is because the town was under a consent order since 2013, which was only recently lifted. And that consent order was imposed because of capacity. It was for this very issue that there was there was too much INI entering the system. And so the town did engage a wastewater engineering firm to prepare a comprehensive wastewater management plan that included programs to reduce INI. So I know I understand that that's that's been ongoing and it's been effective. However, there has been an ongoing capacity issue with this plant over the last couple of decades and the town is under a cap. It's it's under a cap of 670,000 gallons per day average on a monthly basis. It can't exceed that gap. And the data that was provided to me back in April for the most recent data collection indicated that the town exceeded that cap in February of 2022 with a flow of 736,000 gallons per day on average. So there already is a capacity problem at the plant. I don't understand why that's not being acknowledged. I'm hearing tonight the opposite. I'm hearing the developers, engineers say there's plenty of capacity. We're not going to have an issue with other property owners tying into this. But everything that I'm seeing indicates that there is a capacity issue. Now, the the actual, the analysis that was performed by Allen and Major shows the system at a 90% capacity in several locations without even accounting for INI because the days that they did their metering weren't rainy days. So it was basically a dry flow metering test that didn't include INI in the system. And already it's at 90%. So there's a real big question as to what the capacity of the system would be in a rain and a storm event situation. It begs the question whether there should have been a a proper metering analysis done during a wet weather event.
Mr. Damn, do you want to respond to that comment?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of comments. One is the data that Mr. Hill is referring to for the capacity of the plant. Our our permit is based on a 12-month rolling average. So we are allowed to exceed the 670 number as long as our 12-month rolling average does not exceed that number. And it it is not. Our 12-month rolling average is consistently below the 670,000 gallons per day reference. I mean, I I won't belabor the point, you know, I I would have preferred to have, you know, a longer analysis with the meters in the in School Street and, you know, several rain events to, you know, do an analysis. However, timing didn't allow for that. I fully expect, and I don't, I don't know if this is, you know, subject for today, but I fully expect that we will be asking for several conditions based on the analysis that was done on School Street and making sure that we don't have any unintended consequences for allowing a connection such as this, you know, further down. And that would include mitigation for the existing sewer on School Street, whether it be looking for, you know, replacement of certain pipes or lining of certain pipes, which would be consistent with, you know, my expectation, but also, you know, how we have handled our system, you know, and anybody else's connections to to make sure that we have the capacity.
So, Madam Chair, I my comment on the capacity limit is coming is comes from the 2020 Nipton's permit itself. I I'm not, this isn't an interpretation. It's the plain language of the permit. The prior Nipton's permits that govern the system did have an average, did have a monthly average rolling standard. The current one doesn't. It's it specifically says average monthly effluent flow limit. So I disagree with Mr. Damn, but look, you can ask your own town council to review it and provide an opinion, or you can just read the permit yourself and compare it to the prior permits. So there there is a capacity issue. We're adding 25,000 gallons of new flow into the system. And there's been no peer review by a wastewater management firm and the and the metering was done during a dry weather event. And Mr. Damn himself recommended several months ago that there should have been, there should be a peer review of this. So I don't understand why that's changed. He said four or five months ago, there should be a peer review of this issue. And now we're saying it's fine just having the DPW director review it. I I cast no aspersions on Mr. Damn. I know he's very familiar with the system, but he's not a wastewater engineer. And this is a very important issue for the town of Manchester. I want to address I want to address one other topic, and that is the water quality issue. And again, I raised this back in April. There is an issue with the plant, a potential issue by adding additional flows and staying within the permits that have been issued both under Nipton's as well as the Ocean Sanctuary Act. The town is under an obligation to monitor the water quality that comes out of the pipe. The pipe, as you all know, or may know, the pipe extends 9,000 feet into Manchester Bay. There are specific standards that have to be met. There's concentration limits for suspended solids, dissolved oxygen and pathogens. This project should be evaluating what impact this wastewater will have on those limits. There's been no, as far as I know, no analysis as to whether this project is going to cause the town to get out of compliance with the standards that are set under the Ocean Sanctuary Act. And so that that's yet another a critical piece of data that hasn't been provided and it doesn't sound like will be provided during this process. I I can't express enough how distressing it is that this issue has really slipped under the radar. And now we're only a few weeks away from the deadline to And now we're only a few weeks away from the deadline to close the public hearing. So I would stress again, if there's any chance the town can engage the wastewater engineer to review this. And to actually address or answer my letter, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Susan Harrington.
Susan Harrington, Zero Wood Home Road. Daniel Hill took some of my thunder out of the questions I had, but I do have, still have two questions. One is actually pretty basic. How many bedrooms in the project and how many bathrooms? I know usually the number of bedrooms gives an idea of what the water needs are. That's my first question. The second question would be, how did you determine the amount of water and sewer is needed for the project?
Mr. Engler, Mr. Quinn, do you want to. Address, answer the number of bedrooms and how the, the flow is. Anticipated flow is calculated.
Uh, Carlton Quinn, Alan Major Associates. Yeah, so the, the flow, it's a standard. Engineering practice that's done on every project. We use nasty EP Title V calculations for residential. At 110 gallons per bedroom. And that's done for every project to, to calculate it. And that is a very. Exaggerated number for what will be used, but that's just the standard practice of 110 gallons per day, per bedroom, not per unit. And Jeff, do you know off the top, you had a number of bedrooms? But it was all calculated out in the sewer spreadsheet I provided. Capacity, the 363 or something?
Um, I could find that out before the end of the hearing. Off the top of my head, I don't know the number of bedrooms. I should, but. I don't have the application in front of me, but I'm, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll get that number before the end of the hearing.
Okay.
This is. 232, it's 232 bedrooms, sorry. I just saw the.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds right. Okay. Um, did that answer your questions, Ms. Harrington? I'm, I'll move on. Mr. Formano, do you have, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I just wanted to. Circle back on a couple of points that were made by Attorney Hall regarding the, the capacity. And also the treatment facility. It's important to understand that. The CWMP that was done by the town was required to look at not just capacity, but also. The condition of the treatment facility itself and its actual performance relative to meeting its permit limits. So that CWMP does actually address those concerns relative to. Existing current flows as well as potential future flows. So it doesn't do it, doesn't do the town any good to contemplate additional sewer. If the plant inevitably has a problem meeting its current limits or it couldn't meet those limits. With the additional flow added in. So that, that process has already been undertaken by the town's consultants relative to. The treatment facility and its ability to accept additional sewage and also treat that additional sewage without violating the permits. The second thing is it's important to also understand relative to sewer capacity that. The development work proposed is going to be pumped into the existing collection system from the town. Because of that, we have the unique ability to actually set that flow rate. So the capacity of the sewer. Can be back calculated relative to what volume of sewage in terms of gallons per minute can be put into the system. So. That's a flexible number. It depends on what the pump station looks like. What size the force main is. So there is a plenty of opportunity to tailor the discharge from this project. To meet the requirements of the capacity of the sewer system. If there's one particular section. That has a minimum maximum capacity that can't be exceeded in terms of additional flow. We can work around that relative to the design of the pump station. So. And that obviously hasn't been done yet, but you know, that was already contemplated. The analysis that was done was based upon. The full flow that you would typically work with relative to the standard pump station, but there are abilities to cut those numbers back if need be. Once you get into design, working with the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dennis and Hall.
Good, good evening. Dennis and Hall, 20 Mascolamo Street. Question on, on the work that would be done. Does the applicant contemplate providing a payment and performance bond for the work? And will the prevailing wage be employed on the, on any contractors on the site?
Mr. Engler.
I can say that we would comply with what is typically required. In the town of non-40B projects as well as it relates to performance bond. And to your second question. We have not selected a general contractor, so, you know. Subcontractors, any trades. It's premature, so I couldn't say for sure whether there'll be any prevailing wage or not.
Thank you. Was that it, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, thank you.
You can blow your hand. Mary Foley.
Thanks, Sarah. Mary Foley, One Pulaski Drive. I may have missed it at the beginning, so I apologize if I did. Getting back to the sewer capacity in the CWMP report. The extension out to the limited commercial district was for commercial development, which obviously is going to have a different. Capacity and, and flow. Could somebody put it in layman's term that if municipal sewer is used for this 40B? How many, you know, what size commercial development slash housing is then available with our remaining capacity? Is it 500 houses? Is it 25 houses and a large commercial development? Just trying to fit the pieces together of what capacity leftover means. Thank you.
Well, I think that Mr. Dam indicated we have. 150,000 gallons a day excess capacity today. They're talking about using 25,000 for 232 bedrooms. So you can take the difference and calculate it into number of bedrooms to figure out. How many. Bedrooms could be added to the system. You know, it's, it's not based on units. It's, it's, it's based on bedrooms and the expectation is, is that the actual. calculation is higher than what reality will be. So it's not an easy calculation to come up with. Sheila Hill.
Uh, thank you. Sheila Hill, Two Running Ridge Row. I want to echo Attorney Hill's concern about the absence of a peer review. And specific to that. Chuck Dam's comment earlier. On his view of the analysis was that he was. Reasonably comfortable with the analysis. And it would be my point that that is not an acceptable standard. For the capacity and quality issues that are before us. It's just not an acceptable standard. And to me, that points to the need for a peer review. That raises the level of. The standards for this, of the benchmark really, for this project.
Thank you. Mr. Engler, you have your hand raised?
I, I'll wait, Madam Chair, until after Carlton Quinn speaks.
Okay, Mr. Quinn.
I just want to speak to the capacity within School Street, the sewer capacity. We, the analysis I did that showed a 91% capacity, took the peak flow of the municipal system. And took our flow and peaked it at a six times rate. So that was the absolute peak of both things going up to 91%. Unequivocally, we could hold the sewer on our property and pump it at nighttime when there's. No capacity issues in the system. So unequivocally, this project can add sewer to School Street. I don't know about. The sewer treatment plant without affecting the capacity in School Street. We can just hold it in a tank and pump it at night. So I don't think the capacity issues in School Street should be an issue. We can work with Chuck to do additional testing. In the future. But there's no capacity issue in School Street for sewer. If this is the issue we're talking about, we can just hold it onsite and pump it when there's no flow at nighttime.
Thank you. Veronica Matthews.
Oh, hi, Veronica Matthews, 202 Beach Street. I live in one of the homes in Manchester that does not have a sewer service. How many bedrooms in Manchester currently exist that do not have sewer service? And if they all got it, what would that do to our capacity? Thank you. Chuck, I think would answer that.
Mr. Dam, are you still?
I'm, I'm here. I, I wish I could answer that, but I don't, I don't think, whatever I said would just be a ballpark guess. Yeah, I mean, I guess if we're.
Shouldn't we know that? Shouldn't we know that before we start allowing other people to add to our system? Whether our system can actually provide for the people who live here now who don't have sewer?
I, I wish it was that simple. It's, it's just not. And the, I guess the, the quick answer I could give you is, you know, our, like I said, our water. Demand is roughly 620,000 gallons per day. Our ability to. Treat sewer under our permit is 670,000 gallons per day on a 12-month rolling average and that. So, you know, if you said all that the water that was consumed in the distribution system was going to the collection system. And treated at the plant theoretically, you know, and the, I should mention the, the water system is roughly 100% of the town. So, you know, you can make a reasonable expectation. Now that, that's just not the way it works. We have, as has been talked about on this, this call. You know, the, the sizes of the pipes and, you know, the expansion of the sewer into certain neighborhoods. Is just not a feasible solution for some areas and that's the way the town has been built out. So, you know, in, at a very, very high level, sure, we have, we have the ability for that capacity and a. Practical level, it, it's not going to happen. Likely not in my lifetime. And I, I guess while, while I have the floor, I would say that. Our, our permit is a 12-month rolling average. I think what Mr. Hill was referring to is we have a. A duty or an obligation to report our monthly flows, which we do. And so we are, we are certainly within compliance of our. Niptys permit. And if we were not in compliance, we would find ourselves back in consent order. So I just want to make that clear.
Dave Combe.
Hi, this is David Combe, One Norton's Point. I'm really concerned about the capacity issues as well. And I heard that there was a, a time when there was, we actually over exceeded the capacity of the water treatment plant. If we add this project on to the, onto our water treatment plant. And we were to receive an unusual like rainy season or a storm that had tremendous runoff. If, if the, the, the treatment plant has exceeded. Does the overflow just go right into Manchester Harbor untreated? And if, if it does. Are there fines that are, that the, the town would have to come up with for, you know, polluting the, 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 the harbor?
Mr. Dam, can you speak to that?
So, again, the, the capacity that we're referring to on all of these things is typically. A, you know, a daily flow or a, in the. Issue of the tree, at the wastewater treatment plant, 670,000 gallons per day. The capacity at any instant or peak flow within the treatment plant far exceeds that capacity. That's. The 670 is referring to a day. So you can, you know, the, the treatment processes that we use in the. In the process of treating the wastewater. All have individual capacities that well exceed millions of gallons per day. Depending on the treatment train and treatment process. And so I would just say that, that, that is not, you know, kind of what this analysis was looking at. Nor would I expect it to be a issue going down the road. And. So to answer your question specifically, we, we have the ability to, to treat above this capacity at any instant. And we do on a regular basis. As was mentioned, we, we were in the 700,000 gallon per day. Threshold, you know, only a few months ago, but over the course of 12 months. We have peaks and valleys. That's consistent with every other treatment plant. In the world. And that's, that's how we, we handle this process. So. From, from that perspective, I don't see an issue.
Thank you. Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, the only comment I would make is two months ago or give or take. The board was dubious about some of the representations we were making about water and sewer. And I understand that. And they said, or you said. We want to see some analysis. We want to see some data. So we spent the last two months and I've retained excellent professionals who were experts in their field. And the town has an extremely knowledgeable engineer and Mr. Dam, who knows the system better than anybody. Saying there's no issues with capacity. So I would just say that I think the board and members of the public should feel comfortable. That experts that know this information and know this infrastructure have said that the. The existing infrastructure can easily handle the capacity of what we're proposing. Moreover, Mr. Quinn has articulated how our pump station. Can distribute flow into the system in a strategic way. Even if we couldn't do that would be okay, but we can do that. So, you know, respectfully to Counselor Hill, this is not his area of expertise. So I think we're quite comfortable with both the DPW's review. Tatum Howard's review that represents the town and our own technical experts relative to the representations that we've made. In the reports that were issued for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go through the board once more to see if you have any questions on water and sewer. And then we will move on to environmental. John Benares, are you good?
Yes, I have nothing further, Ted. Thanks.
Jim Dietrich.
I'm fine, sir.
Okay. Sean's on.
I'm good, sir.
Brian Solissey.
Clear as mine, I'm good.
Okay, Catherine Howe.
No.
Chuck, you have your hand raised? Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I, yeah, if you, just for one second, I, I won't take long. I just want to say that, you know, I. I understand, you know, everybody's comments and I'm happy to discuss if anybody wants to come to the office or send an email. But I also say that if I was not comfortable and there was any doubt in my mind. I would be the first one to require a peer review and I would be the first one to say something when it comes to, and I, I expect to. Discuss several options in terms of conditions and mitigation for this project and I will continue to do that. So, thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to. The environmental. AC Minahan, are you on?
I am. Good evening. And Andrew Gorman is with me as well.
Okay.
We also have Matt Cody on deck in case you want to dive into the engineering details, but. He is not going to be on unless I ping him.
Okay. So you gave us a new report.
Yes.
A supplemental report regarding wildlife habitat, right?
Yep. So this is our, I think, final letter, or at least that was its intent. We did receive the applicant's responses to prior comments. As well as some other correspondence between yesterday and today. This letter was issued without the benefit of that, although we had had conversations with the applicants. We were not surprised by the information that was submitted. And I will say we've reviewed the other information that was provided and it wouldn't change the ultimate finding of our letter.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can give an overview.
Yes.
Okay, so the letter contains several parts. We reorganized this. I said at the last hearing that in order for readability and understandability, we were not going to continue the back and forth. We said this, they said this, we said this, then they answered that. So we've taken it now with just what the remaining items were that we wanted to have the board, board's attention drawn to. So. We, our letter has several sections. They are vernal pool considerations, wildlife habitat assessment. wildlife habitat assessment, blasting and site operations, protection measures, waiver requests, and potential conditions. So in the vernal pool consideration section, we had a couple of comments on some additional hydrology information that we think would be warranted to ensure that the system will properly infiltrate and maintain the vernal pool hydrology. We've outlined those questions herein and we've included a suggested condition for the board to ensure that that happens with third party review during the Conservation Commission notice of intent process. I'm happy to go through any of these in more detail, but I figured I'd start at a high level. The next section is the wildlife habitat assessment. And I will say we agree with the overall findings of the wildlife habitat assessment that there's not likely to be an adverse effect to wildlife habitat from the project. There were some statements in the report that we did not quite agree with and we had a couple clerical errors that we requested be corrected, which I believe they have done. I did not have an opportunity to re-review the full report that we received yesterday afternoon. The things that we disagreed with, for example, were a statement in the report that said that full wildlife habitat function will resume after two years. In our opinion, that's impossible because seven acres of wooded area will no longer be wooded. But given the species that are using the site in the context of the project, we agree that overall there's not an adverse impact. We reviewed the blasting and site operations protection measures document and thanked the applicant for providing it. We had a few notes and questions on it. Again, we've said before, the construction period is what gives us the most concern about this project, just because of the construction challenges and the steep slopes in proximity, the vernal pools. So we've noted a few things and again, suggested some conditions that the board could consider to address that because we agree with Mr. Engler's indication that in the comprehensive permitting process, you don't necessarily get into all of the details and fully delve into everything. So he's given us enough that we can see there's thought to it and there's some feasibility, but we do have some follow-up information that we think would be warranted as the project proceeds, if, if the project proceeds to full design. Regarding the waiver requests, we've included in that section each of the waiver requests in the order the applicant requested it. We reviewed those waiver requests as we have been doing in the context of whether or not the local need outweighs the need for affordable housing.
Patty around? She was there, you know, with the cruise with a friend, Patty, last night. Patty Mitchell.
Okay.
Carolyn Marletta, could you put, oh, you, I gotta mute her, sorry.
They just muted, yep. So we reviewed the waiver requests in the context of whether the local need outweighs the need for affordable housing in accordance with the state standards. That's the frame within which we've been conducting our review. Those local needs, as I'm sure everyone is aware, are health and safety, site and building design, and open space preservation. We do not take exceptions to the waiver requests. For each of the waiver requests, we've included, as the ZDA had requested, three sections. The first is the necessity of the relief. So we've explained why the relief is required in order to support the project. We've then discussed what alternatives may exist to eliminate the need for relief or minimize the need for relief. And then discuss adverse impact of approval. You know, as an example, for the work within some of the vernal pool setbacks with the waiver request that's been asked for, we noted that the grading could be tightened up in a few areas and the impact could be minimized, but that impact cannot be entirely avoided by the project because of the site access and the, and the site layout. So in the applicant's response from yesterday, they had acknowledged, yes, we can probably tighten up the grading, but agreed it can't be avoided. So because the waiver requests, in my opinion, fall into two categories. Are they, either they are necessary for the project or there's a few where we feel like, I don't know, do you really need a waiver request for that? It seems to us that they've met the standard, for example, a waiver from the wildlife study requirements, that they've done a wildlife study. However, even for those more procedural or administrative, we recognize that there is a level of subjectiveness to the criteria and that my understanding is that's why the applicant is requesting the waiver so that they have, can have some certainty moving forward. So we don't object to that, those either. We do have various suggested conditions, however, as I've noted, to go along with those waiver requests. So in order for us to be comfortable with those waiver requests, we would want the additional hydrology information that we've noted or that I mentioned before. And so that brings me to the final section of the letter, which is where I'll spend a little bit more time because it's the new section that we haven't discussed before with the board. And then, of course, I'm happy to go back and discuss any of the other sections or information that the board may wish to. So if you do have the letter and are referring to it, if you go to page nineteen, that's where our potential conditions section starts. And if it pleases the board, I'll just run through them briefly.
Yes.
Number one, we're asking again for that additional stormwater management information. In a nutshell, we'd like to have some evaluation completed because of the location of the retaining wall and some of the design considerations that go into that, which is not necessarily appropriate to fully design at this stage, but it could affect the infiltration ability of the stormwater system. So things along those lines and really it's just all, both comments relate to ensuring infiltration will occur as planned. Number twelve, the wildlife study that the applicant submitted lists certain additional mitigation measures, namely deploying additional silt fence during the vernal breeding season and then also creating additional dead woody tiles. And so we suggest that the ZDA consider incorporating that as a condition. And I will pause and just say that would of course recommend that the ZDA coordinate with town council to confirm that anything that we're suggesting be a condition is appropriate for inclusion as a condition in your decision. Number thirteen, we did ask for some additional information about the construction approach. And I know the applicant has indicated that there will be a detailed construction plan prepared moving forward. So we're just suggesting prior to the start of work that the ZDA receive that. And that third party review of it be undertaken as applicable. On page twenty, number fourteen, we discuss a potential condition regarding invasive species management. And I believe if I recall correctly that the applicant in their response letter yesterday indicated that they are planning on incorporating invasive species management on the site. Number fifteen, we recommend that the more detailed design documents moving forward undergo third party review prior to, you know, as part of the Conservation Commission review or prior to issuance of a building permit. Number sixteen, we continue to recommend that time of year restrictions be evaluated for construction. I know the applicant has indicated that that's not necessary. I think that may be the case once a full construction management plan is detailed, but since we don't have that yet, we had suggested that there be a condition that time of year restrictions be evaluated. The applicant, number seventeen, had agreed, I think there had been mention of a conservation restriction through the process in the wildlife, wildlife study and in the applicant's response yesterday, it seems that there is a commitment to that conservation restriction. And so we're suggesting that it be noted as a condition. Number eighteen, the project will be subject to NITDs. Construction general permit for disturbances greater than an acre. And as part of that, the applicant will need to evaluate federal rare species. There are two listed species and one candidate species on the site. They'll need to address that during their NITDs permitting. And we are just suggesting that the ZDA be kept apprised of the related information. Number nineteen, we had some comments on the erosion controls. So again, suggesting a condition that the applicant undertake that additional evaluation as they proceed to more detailed design. Number twenty, the vernal pools are clearly certifiable, which the applicant has, you know, studied and confirmed. So we'd suggest if the applicant's amenable to a condition that the pools be actually certified so that they'll be in the natural heritage database and the town's list of certified vernal pools, the inventory would be updated. Number twenty-one, and this was addressed a bit in the applicant's letter, but that came out after we had finalized this letter. So we were just saying a condition to evaluate mitigation. This goes back to their final waiver request, which requests a waiver from the requirement to provide buffer zone mitigation. The applicant interprets that section as not allowing the meadow habitat or other areas to be considered mitigation since it's starting off forested. I don't know whether the conservation restriction could be considered mitigation, but I think as part of any decision, somehow quantifying the benefits that are proposed as part of the project or the, you know, mitigation and considerations, you know, the meadow habitat is a, a positive aspect of the project that could be noted. Certainly the conservation restriction. And then finally, condition number two, we were recommend, I'm sorry, number twenty-two, we were recommending a condition for pre and post-construction monitoring of the vernal pools.
Thank you. Um, I'll go around the board and see if people have questions. John Benares? Questions, basically?
I don't really have any questions. I just, I would say that I overall agree with these proposed conditions. And I just want to stress the importance of a third party review that's working on behalf of the town. Once we have, you know, permit set, permit ready, plans and specs and more finalized plans like a cut and fill plan, you know, some materials management plan, things of that nature. So that, you know, as we get closer to that, you know, that, that permitting process, we were, you know, comfortable with the scope once these plans get finalized. So I just add, you know, to that, that I agree with the third party reviews.
Okay. Jim Dietrich?
Thank you, sir. No, I would agree with everything John just said. Thank you.
Okay. Sean's on?
I'm good right now, sir. I think everything's been pretty well covered.
Okay. Brian Solissey?
No, I think it was, I think the review was excellent and I agree with everything that John has said. As far as protecting the town's interests going forward with the third party review.
James Mitchell?
I agree with everything said so far. I do think that this is an excellent peer review. It's very comprehensive and thorough. Under the potential condition section, I count twelve suggestions. I agree with them all. And I think that these are excellent additions to add into our waiver considerations.
Catherine Howe?
No comments right now, persons, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Engler, you have your hand raised.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just noting that I spoke to our, we just got this a couple of days ago. Did have a chance to go through it with the, the team. And in general, we're, we're comfortable with the conditions that Beals and Thomas has laid out. I don't know if it's appropriate. There is a few clarifications, you know, to some of the conditions we're just not sure about. I don't know if it's appropriate, whether it be, I mean, helpful to, for us to submit those in writing, you know, next week or, you know, ASAP, you know, early next week as for Beals and Thomas's clarification or the board's clarification, just because a couple of things we're, we're not exactly clear about. One thing I would, and you know, I know Beals and Thomas can't write this, but we would hope the board would. I, I think the third party reviewer should be Beals and Thomas. I mean, Stacy and Andrew and Matthew have gotten to know this project and this property pretty well. It seems to me like going forward through the construction process, it would be efficient in the town's best interest. Obviously, that's at the town's discretion. But I would hope the third party reviewer would be Beals and Thomas. Then we just have a couple of other questions, a few requests, i.e., you know, we are okay with the conservation restriction, but we would like that subject to, you know, receipt of a building permit. We don't want to put a CR on a property before we actually have a usable permit. So, you know, some of the, some of the conditions, I think the timing is important. I know Beals and Thomas probably would agree with that. So I, I think I'll shut up, but what I'll say is, in, in general, we didn't find any of these conditions, you know, totally objectionable that we're under, over my dead body, are we going to do this? But we may, you know, just ask a couple of claratives questions or make a couple of suggestions for the board's consideration and that appeals to Thomas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up to the public. Only one question, one time per person, because we've been going through environmental for many, many meetings. So I will open it up to the public if there are specific questions regarding this July twelfth supplemental review. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Is this only open to questions or can I make a statement?
Have you made the statement before?
Some of the parts I have, yes, some I have not.
I don't want a duplicate statement.
Excuse me?
Only new thoughts, not stuff you've repeated before.
Thank you. First off, my name is Alan, Alan McMillan, Rockport Conservation Commission for thirty-five years. I'm really concerned. I've been on the commission for thirty-five years. We've never had more than two requests for exemptions, twenty-two exemptions from the Wetland Protection Act is pretty significant. The significant amount of land, trees cut down and the blasting, the salt pollution, the location of the town. And I have not heard anyone in all these meetings speaking in favor of this project except the applicant. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Elizabeth Pyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Elizabeth Pyle. I'm an attorney at Hill Law and I represent the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. I'm here tonight with two consultants that would like to make presentations to you on the water budgets for the vernal pools and the wildlife habitat assessment and vernal pool assessment. Those people are our wetland scientist, Patrick Gardner, and our water resources consultant, Scott Horstley. And before I introduce them, I would just like to say that the the information that they're providing focuses on the water quantities entering the vernal pool and the water quality entering the vernal pools and how that will be altered by the proposed project. And we submitted Patrick Gardner's first assessment back in June. I do not believe that Beals and Thomas had an opportunity to review that assessment. It was not listed in the materials that they reviewed. And I would ask that Beals and Thomas have the opportunity to review Patrick Gardner's and Scott Horstley's assessments that were provided to you previously and today. And without that additional review and information, the peer review from Beals and Thomas is not complete because they're not looking at everything that the board has. And with the information that we're presenting to you tonight, you'll see that there will be negative alterations on the water budgets of the vernal pools and on the water quality of the vernal pools that should prevent the board from granting waivers because this project will negatively impact the vernal pools. So first, I'd like to introduce.
And just a second, Ms. Pyle, and to respond, the, the board and the town made the determination that they were not going to have Beals and Thomas review the Mr. Gardner's and, and Mr. Horstley's reviews that they would stand on their own.
Well, we would ask.
We would take them into consideration.
That you take them into consideration and the board can take all of the information before it into consideration. And even though that decision may, you may have made in the past, I would ask again that going forward, that you allow Beals and Thomas to look at that because they don't have the complete information. And you have new information before you that's relevant to whether waivers here are justified. And I would request that you do that going forward. But if you do not do that, I request that you listen to the presentations tonight and factor it into your decision making.
Thank you.
First, I would like to have Patrick Gardner speak about the water budget that he performed and his review of the wildlife habitat assessment. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
I am with you. So do I have the floor?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm Patrick Garner and I, I'm a wetland scientist and hydrologist. And I have submitted two letters to the zoning board, one regarding water budgets to the vernal pools and a more recent one regarding. and a more recent one regarding wildlife habitat, which was an analysis of the Goddard report that the board received recently. The water budget issue is two-pronged. One is volumetric and secondly is water quality. And both of these concerns are driven by state regulation and case law. And they have not been addressed by the applicant and they have not been, as Elizabeth Pyle notes, who are not as reviewed by BNT. Water budgets are critical to vernal pools and there's substantial case law at this point that requires an applicant to make that analysis, to take a look at the effects of a given project on the amount of water coming into the, into the vernal pool itself. And to assess whether it's going to make substantial changes and alterations to those vernal pools. Those are not allowed. The Wetland Protection Act is very clear. They define alteration very clearly. And they don't allow the types of changes that we have analyzed that will occur to these vernal pools, particularly the northern and the southern vernal pools that join the property. There, the effects are substantial. They are both a reduction, a fairly dramatic reduction in the watershed areas and a truncation in velocity and other factors. And there's a second prong to this, and that is that certified vernal pools become what are called Class A outstanding resource waters. And those are protected under three fourteen CMR four. And the three fourteen CMR sets certain standards, particularly water quality standards that must be met by any project that may impact a sort of certified vernal pool. And those include factors such as turbidity, salinity, pH factors, hydrocarbons and other changes to a, to a vernal pool. Those have not been addressed. Those were not addressed in the Goddard Wildlife Report. And they have not been addressed in any other fashion that we have seen as part of the public record. So we're very concerned by that and the applicant simply cannot ignore it and choose to pretend that these requirements don't exist because as regulations, they do and they need to be looked at very carefully. Regarding the Goddard Wildlife Report, which I submitted a report to you recently, we have to defer largely to BNT. They're very competent. I think we all agree. They've had access to the site. The applicant has not allowed third-party access. So we have not been in a position where we could go onsite and sort of assess Goddard's assessment. But that being said, again, under the Wetland Protection Act, Goddard doing a wildlife analysis has an obligation to take a look at the hydrologic regime of a, of a certified vernal pool and analyze whether a given project is going to have an impact on that. That was not addressed by Goddard. He remained totally silent. In fact, his wildlife report doesn't mention outstanding resource orders. It doesn't mention Class A orders. It's utterly silent as if the vernal pool simply don't fall under those regulations and they do. So again, we draw that to your attention because what you are seeing in the way of submittals to you is completely, I'm going to say it's conveniently incomplete. And we want to emphasize that these are issues that are going to constantly come up as this project is reviewed until they're adequately entered. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Horstley?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I'll, and I'll be brief because I did speak at the last meeting and I'll respect your request or requirement that we don't repeat. I did submit a letter today through our attorney, Elizabeth Pyle, and it documents the second part of what Pat was just talking about, hydrologic analysis of these vernal pools. I, I think everybody would agree, I hope everybody'd agree, that the site certainly is constrained and sensitive to the fact that it's surrounded by and includes these vernal pools. My analysis so far has focused on the northern vernal pool, specifically the groundwater analysis recharge. And I want to just take a minute and explain that because I'm not sure everybody understands the importance of groundwater. But groundwater, it's beneath the ground, we can't see it, but groundwater provides the base flow. While we're not, all not looking throughout the year, it provides a continual source of water to these vernal pools. And which affects water levels. It also affects the water chemistry as Pat just referred to. And my analysis, which I submitted today in detail and I mentioned previously, suggests that on the northern vernal pool area, that approximately forty to fifty percent, nearly half of the groundwater recharge that currently goes to that vernal pool will not, will not happen post-development. And let me briefly explain why that is. We've all seen the site plan. There's a lot of impervious surfaces. And generally speaking, what happens is a lot of that impervious surface, rooftops, driveways and parking lots is directed to a very large infiltration system that Beals and Thomas has called out appropriately in the southern end of the site. They're transferring water from the north to the south. In effect, they are transferring water from the northern vernal pool to the southern infiltration system. I would find it unbelievable if somebody would suggest that that is not occurring to some extent. So really, maybe the only remaining debate is how much. My numbers say forty to fifty percent. I've been looking for the applicant's numbers and haven't seen any. They have, I don't believe this has been analyzed. If it's even close to forty to fifty percent, this is significant. And I would just wrap up by saying that I know that the Conservation Commission hearings have come up and there might be a tendency to say, well, this is, sounds like a conservation issue. However, these infiltration systems we're talking about and many, most of the impervious surfaces are out of jurisdiction for the Conservation Commission. So this regulatory board really maybe is the only opportunity to address these issues. And I think the vernal pool issue is an important one. I think water in a vernal pool is critical. I've submitted an analysis, which I'll stand behind. I have some pretty good qualifications. I'd be happy to review it compared to the applicant's analysis. However, that doesn't exist, Madam Chair. We've not sent any analysis. They've ignored this issue. I, I can only conclude they think it's insignificant. And I don't think it is. So I will conclude there and would absolutely love to engage in a discussion and sit down and talk about whether or not this is a real issue, that people care about water in vernal pools. I think it's a really critical issue. And again, it's beyond a concom issue. So please don't think that this is something that's going to be handled by the Conservation Commission because it can only be done so partly. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jeff Koschand?
Madam Chair, today I emailed you two pictures that I'd like to share from my computer screen. Would you?
Would you please state your name and address first?
Jeff, Jeff Koschand, Manchester resident at fifteen Vine Street. I emailed you a couple of pictures today that I'd like to be able to share from my screen, that one picture of a boulder and another a map of the area.
I just, you should be able to share.
Thanks. At the top there is the first picture of the boulder. I think you can see that.
Yes.
It has a brass plaque carved into it and the plaque says, if you can't read it, "To the glory of God and for the benefit of man, these woods are preserved forever." Eighteen seventy-nine is the date right there. The second picture down here is a, is a map showing the location of this boulder in plaque. It's right down here at the base of the arrow. It's in the middle of Cathedral Pines, which is this entire area where SLV is proposing this project. Eighteen seventy-nine, that's a hundred and fifty years ago, long before the trustees of reservations, Essex County Green Belt and pretty much any conservation efforts existed. That Cathedral Pines conservation effort was basically a trailblazer. It was one of the first conservation efforts in the state for sure. It says, quote, "These woods are preserved forever," end quote. Why do we think we suddenly have the right to revoke that conservation effort and not preserve these woods? Why should the forty-B regulation be allowed to dismiss the foresight of those who conserved Cathedral Pines? This location.
Mr. Koschand, it's not the forty-B process. It's the problem that the town voted at a town meeting to zone this property as part of the limited commercial district. And there is no conservation restriction or open space restriction on this property. And so the fact that there's a plaque there, you know, nothing was done legally to protect this site.
Okay, so you, you think that the ZBA should, you know, allow that development on there and just basically revoke that, that hundred and fifty-year-old conservation effort? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that that conservation effort was not done in a way to protect this specific piece of property.
Okay.
If it had been done, we wouldn't be in this position.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Patrice Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to address the, I'm trying to turn my video on. I'd like to address the wildlife study and a few aspects of it. I did submit a letter to the board earlier today with some of my grave concerns with the report and I'd like to address some separate ones right now. The study is rich on boilerplate details and it's very, very long, but it's generic information and it's very light on the actual specific details for this area. It mentions roughly thirteen species of birds, eight species of mammals and one snake. I particularly like thinking there's only one snake species out there personally, but, but really, this is a walk with an Audubon specialist can yield forty-five to fifty different bird species in half an hour. They've mentioned thirteen. Wood ducks and Virginia rails were nesting right in the shrubby northern vernal pool this season and they are not mentioned. Approximately ten trees, trees and shrubs are mentioned. Our vascular plant study includes three hundred species of plants in the surrounding wetland and woodlands. If you add the mosses, the lichens, the fungi, now you might begin to understand the biological diversity of this area. I also find that the wildlife habitat assessment included numerous unfounded conclusions. Under the scientific method, not finding evidence to support a hypothesis does not mean the hypothesis is proven false, yet we see no adverse effect repeatedly. Language that would have been more appropriate would be inconclusive, no findings or a low probability. Just to paraphrase an extreme case of jumping to an unfounded conclusion, they've stated that they don't know what rare species are located in the two nearby areas designated as priority habitat for endangered species. That's the Wilderness Conservation Area and the Monoliths. They don't know what it is. They don't know what to look for, where to look for it, what the appropriate season or time of day to look for it. They didn't find it. So their conclusion is we can presume that there are no rare plant or animal species on site. This is just not a scientific method to conduct such an important assessment with. The proposed project will minimally alter areas subject to protection under the WPA and local bylaw. I'd like to share my screen if I may for a minute. Just gonna take me a second here. This is on the right, a graphic from the applicant's wildlife assessment. The one on the left is our version, which shows the buffer areas, which you can see are just about the same shapes. So I'm fairly confident that we've got the same area that we're looking at. But we have superimposed the building, the road, the water treatment areas and everything that the building and disturbance will include. I can't see how anyone could conclude that this is minimally altered when thirty percent of the proposed project is within those buffers. Eighteen percent of the building is within the buffers. A hundred percent of the surface level parking within the buffers. Thirty-nine percent of the roadway within the buffers. Fifty percent of the sidewalk within the buffers. Fifty-two percent of the water treatment area within the buffers. I do not see how anyone can consider this no adverse effect. I've returned my page here. And one more conclusion that strikes me as very strange and was echoed by BNT tonight. The proposed project will result in the loss of approximately seven point two acres of wooded habit, habitat. Provided, however, that a portion of the site is planned to be native meadow mix that will exponentially improve the pollinator habitat found in this area. Prove it. Are native bumblebees, particularly the ones rapidly headed for in the endangered species list, a very specific flower needs? Are they planning to provide Purnella and St. John's worth, pastemon? Or just the generic mix of Coryopsis and Black Eyed Susans that the non-native honeybees love? Are these included in your native mix? What about wasps, butterflies, moths that feed on the oaks, the willow, the alder, the birch, the cherry? What are you planting that's going to replace seven acres times forty feet tall of the existing pollinator system? This is an example of a conclusion with no scientific basis. Your existing willow, viburnum, plethora, blueberry, sarsaparilla, sarsfrass, elderberry, not necessarily in that order, but they unfold into an extended season of nectar and pollen for pollinators. The wood nymphs, larvae feed on the sedges. There are red-spotted purples mourning cloaks as butterflies. Hundreds of species of larvae feed on the willows and the oaks. And all of these caterpillars are what feed the birds. But of course, they didn't mention the birds or many of the species of birds. We have the what nesting wood ducks in Virginia rails and you have the verios and the warblers that pass through. I, I don't know how the limited information that is contained in this report can be considered a wildlife habitat assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke Legere?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luke Legere, McGregor Legere and Stevens. I represent the Citizens Initiative for Manchester Affordable Housing. I, I just want to stress for the board that the consultants you've heard from just most recently are Pat Garner and Scott Horstley are very barely highly qualified and very well-respected experts in their fields. I just want to make sure that's in the record because they're certainly too, too modest to toot their own horns in that way. But what's been very clear from the submittals that they've provided and their testimony here tonight and previously is that this project is going to substantially alter the vernal pool watersheds on the site. It's going to significantly degrade water quality in those vernal pools. And it's going to drastically decrease the volume of water in those pools. You know, to, to me, that then begs the question, when we turn to the, to the applicant's list of waiver requests, whether the applicant has satisfied their burden of establishing for the board that they actually qualify for and need these requested waivers. It's my view that they have not met that burden to prove to the board that they are in fact entitled to and need these waivers. As, as the board knows, you may deny waiver requests unless and until the applicant proves that they would render the project uneconomic, meaning the denials of those requests would render the project uneconomic. We heard Beals and Thomas and we've seen in their submittals flagging a number of the waiver requests under the town's wetland bylaw, which in Beals and Thomas's opinion, at least as I understand it, aren't really necessary at all. Others, we've heard from Beals and Thomas, really maybe are necessary, that the project couldn't be built without those waivers. Which then, I believe, puts the board in a position of needing to consider whether this is a project Which then, I believe, puts the board in a position of needing to consider whether this is a project that cannot be conditioned in a way to protect these important local interests associated with the wetland resources on the property. And so that would be a valid reason for a denial of this project. So what I'm really asking here is that the board parse those waiver requests very carefully and closely. Look at each one individually, understand what it is the applicant is arguing in terms of why it's necessary. And then come to your own decision. Would, you know, is the argument that this would render the project uneconomic? Or are these waiver requests that they could meet? And maybe in some instances already are meeting. And then again, if these are waiver requests that must be granted, what would it mean for the board to grant those waiver requests? And would those waivers so significantly harm these important local interests and concerns that the board's left with no choice really other than to deny the project? So those are my comments, Madam Chair. I I thank you for the time. Oh, just one other a quick, quick note that's mentioned was mentioned previously. I think it was sort of mentioned tangentially tonight, but another condition that we would just want to make sure that the board considers carefully on the environmental piece of things would be to require an environmental compliance monitor. So if the board is inclined to approve this project with conditions requiring that an environmental compliance monitor be brought in, essentially a third party to just oversee the work that's being performed and ensure that all these various environmental concerns are being properly and adequately addressed and protected. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carlton Quinn.
You're muted. Sorry about that. I would just wanted to respond to a couple of comments from Pat Gardner and Scott Horsey, if I could. Scott Horsey had indicated that we are ignoring his letters. I just wanted to point out to the board that the applicant provided a full response to Scott Horsey's April thirteenth letter. In addition to John Chesia's greatest letter, we provided significant improvements to the drainage. We provided a whole new set of plans. We addressed their concerns. We provided a drainage report. And one of the concerns that was specifically outlined in Scott Horsey's letter was the water budget to the South Vernal Pool, which I did address in his letter. And we have not heard anything back from Scott Horsey until tonight in a letter where he switched his concern to the northerly wetland. The northerly wetland, I think we stated we're reducing the groundwater by forty percent of that. The northerly wetland is fed by Sawmill Brook. The effects of the groundwater are so insignificant from this project that Vernal Pool, I assume that's why Scott Horsey didn't bring it up in the first letter. There's there's no significant impact to groundwater because the the areas they're showing are not fully noting the proposed water sheds that are flown to that area from our site firstly, and it's completely ignoring the Sawmill Brook that is providing the groundwater recharge to that that has dozens of square miles of watershed. And, you know, I hear a lot from Pat Gardner on case law, you know, I just designed the regulations. I'm not an attorney. Beals and Thomas reviewed it versus the regulations, not case law. Again, you know, I think we've met all these standards and provided information and been responsive, even though it wasn't required to some of the butters experts, and we provided a narrative addressing every one of their comments in a May twenty-fifth response. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Rosine.
Good evening. For the record, Ryan Rosine with Goddard Consulting, wildlife biologist and wetland scientist. Yeah, I would just like to comment on a few things that are just really what Carlton just said, and then also comment on Ms. Murphy's statements and and feedback. What what Carlton just said about the the northerly vernal pool, you know, that that whole area is predominantly fed by Sawmill Brook. It has, like you said, square miles of of watershed and and Mr. Horsey and Mr. Gardner failed to, in their report, account for the entire watershed and only looked at the project site. So, so and also just to comment that we're not proposing any alteration to vernal pool habitat under the Wetlands Protection Act. So we're not we're not changing any vernal pool habitat as defined under Wetlands Protection Act. And in response to Ms. Murphy's comments on the wildlife habitat study. So one point she made was about the species that we have seen on site and that they were a lot less than what, you know, you know, we only listed thirteen birds. Yes, that that is all in the report. I stated that, you know, what all whatever we saw or heard while on the site visits is what we saw and what I labeled. I'm not gonna label, I'm not gonna put in the report birds that, you know, I didn't see or I didn't hear or animals that I didn't see. That would just be, you know, unethical and, you know, biologically inappropriate to do that. In response to the priority habitat that's north of the site, yes, we do not know what species, whether plants or animals are on there. According to Natural Heritage, only property owners are allowed to request that information. So even if we requested the information, we wouldn't be given information from Natural Heritage to identify what species those are. And we did, we did look for rare species on site on Ivory Site Visit. We looked at every plant. We looked at the animals on site to try to identify if any species were there. We didn't find any, and so that's what our report concluded. The the overall habitat evaluation was done in accordance with DEP standards. And it meets the requirements for this, and Beals and Thomas has agreed with this, our our methods and studies, and that has been, you know, part of the public record that they agree with this. And and we do, we meet the standard of no adverse effect under the Wetlands Protection Act. And and that's all I'd like to say for now. If there's other comments or questions that come up, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Schofield. You're muted. Ms. Schofield, you need to unmute.
Forget that. Thank you.
Address, please.
I live here in Essex, and I'm a trustee of the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. And I guess more importantly, I regularly, I consider this my neighborhood. I regularly travel around and past the preserved properties where this project is proposed to go. And I just have some general comments that have been made by others before me, but not by me. I'm not a native of the area. I grew up in Michigan, and I moved to the Boston area in the early seventies. And I really clearly remember the first time I ever came up to the North Shore and drove around and saw in particular the green corridor that divides our two towns or that our two towns share. And then I moved to Essex in the early eighties. And it's while I was here that I started to learn just how hard fought that green corridor and keeping it green, getting it protected and keeping it green. How much hard work was entailed in that? There were a handful of very visionary people and some equally visionary landowners who started this gradual process. And as others have said, the fact that this is a beautiful protected area is no accident. So in my layman's view, there is just no way that a forty B project belongs in the middle of this beautiful area. The forty B language requires that a project be integrated into the existing development pattern. And there's no, there's nothing, thank God, in either of our two towns that looks anything like this building. And there's absolutely nothing in the immediate vicinity. The only thing that's integrated into Shingle Place Hill is the greenery that's already there. And so if for no other reason, and Lord, there are plenty of other reasons, I would encourage the ZBA to decline full stop the SLV permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Horsey, I'll recognize you, but I do not want to have a back and forth.
I understand that, Madam Chair. It is brief, but this came up at the last meeting too, so I think it deserves a brief rebuttal. And this is the statement that the vernal pool is not affected by groundwater changes because it's near the stream or is affected by the stream. And this was raised at the last meeting. It was raised tonight, and I just have to clarify something. The fact of the matter is, if the stream is contributing a lot of water to this vernal pool, it's not a vernal pool. Because fish get in there, they eat the eggs. If you read of the guidance and the criteria for vernal pools, it can't be a water body that's heavily influenced by a stream. Now, that may occur on on occasion. But this was mentioned that the last meeting was mentioned tonight. I've spent hours looking for the data, the water level measurements to support Carlton's statement that the water levels, the stream is influencing the vernal pool. There is none. And and my belief is when people make statements, they should provide the data, the water levels. And again, if it were influenced by the stream, it wouldn't be a vernal pool. So this is mutually exclusive. It doesn't make sense. And then the last point is, yes, this is another is a larger watershed, but we're not talking about the watershed. We're talking about this property. And each property gets regulated property by property. And there was this thing which I'm sure you've all heard about called cumulative effects. And if the applicant says, well, you only should consider my project in the context of the watershed. Of course, it's going to be a small impact. But that's not how we do things. That's not the process that's been developed by EPA and DEP. It's cumulative impact analysis. Each property has to be regulated individually. And the fact of the matter is, this property is going to dramatically change the hydrology, its hydrologic impacts that wetlands, excuse me, that vernal pool. And again, if it's heavily influenced by the stream, then it's not a vernal pool. So we should get that straight from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garner, do you have something brief? I don't want a back and forth.
I have something brief, so I'll keep it, keep it very brief for you. I I want to note, I mentioned in my comments about case law and projects like this with vernal pools in this vicinity that and in fact, forty B projects have gone into appeal and have gone into the judicatory process. And they have been denied specifically because the impacts from the project to the vernal pools, however small, have been considered to be alterations. And under the Wetland Protection Act, you simply can't create this sort of alteration. And DEP hasn't set a threshold when they, for instance, they have said that altering ten percent of the watershed is okay, but altering fifty percent is not. Nothing like that exists. The the criteria and the regulations are very clear that there can be no alterations to the to the watershed and to the water budgets. And that's what Scott and I are emphasizing, and that's not what the applicant wants to hear because it's complex. It requires expertise, and it requires an analysis that has not been made. And that hasn't been made by particularly, I think the burden falls on Goddard because part of the watershed analysis as required by DEP is an analysis of the hydrologic regime for vernal pools. And that's simply a silent item in the report itself. So I'll I'll leave it at that. This is unsure we're hearing the end of this, but it it can't be and should not be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, I'm not gonna recognize you. I think we've had enough back and forth on this issue. Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I don't have much to add other than, you know, the town and the board very rigorously requested the wildlife corridor and vernal pool assessment. I begrudgingly, I resisted at first and then agreed to do it at great expense, and it took a lot of time, and we submitted it. And it's by your own peer review consultant standards professionally done, and they agree with the conclusions. I I don't think there's anything more to say. Our consulting team of Goddard and Alan and Major are very credentialed as well, and we feel very comfortable and confident with the representations that we've made. And that every state regulation that needs to be met has been met. And so far, our representations, for the most part, have been proven outright. So we're not going to go beyond what we've done relative to the study. It stands on its own. Beals and Thomas submitted a very extensive response that we've said we've agreed with. And then in regard to Mr. Legere, we've made it clear that, as the board knows, the the building is not close to the vernal pools. It's the road. So if we don't get the waivers, we can't build the road. And with no road, we have no project. So that will be the easiest uneconomic discussion I have ever been involved with, and I've been involved with more than my fair share because it's a zero sum game. It's zero units or it's the project as represented. So it 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 would be a cakewalk relative to show the necessity of these units. Because it's not like, oh, well, you can take off a wing of the building or whatever. We cannot build the road. We've looked at the road seven ways to Sunday. And the way the road has been engineered is how it needs to be engineered. So I would disagree with Mr. Legere's representations about that we haven't demonstrated the need. We spent the last six months demonstrating the need. So with that said, I think we're we're quite comfortable with all the analysis and technical assessment that's been submitted in the public record, and Beals and Thomas has reviewed it, and we'll let it stand on its own. Thank you very much.
The last person I'm from the public I'm going to recognize is Carolyn Malata, and I ask you to keep it brief and state your name and address.
This is John Marletta, Forest Lane, Manchester. I have a question to Jeff regarding the notice that there will be a large reduction of the rubble that's to be moved offsite. All of a sudden, there's a tremendous reduction in the traveling of these trucks and so forth. Where is this rubble that's going to be unearthed from the site to go?
I'm I'm sorry, we're not discussing that tonight. We we discussed that at our last meeting. We'll take it up again on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna quickly run through the board again and see if anybody has any com- last comments or questions. John.
No further questions. I just think that, you know, Mr. Horsey's statement about the cumulative effects of the project, that that's something we have to think about when we make these, you know, decisions, when we consider these waivers. This is a large catalyst project, and, you know, we can talk about the technical aspects back and forth all day long. I mean, we can all agree that there will be adverse effects on the site, whether it's hydrology or vernal pools or whatever. I mean, there's a, the the scope is so large. We can't just, you know, we can all agree that that the surrounding area will be affected in some manner, and and we have to consider the cumulative effects. And I think we should just, you know, consider all of that as we make the, went through these waiver decisions and make our decisions. Thanks.
Thanks. Jim Dietrich.
No further comments.
Sean Sun.
I know for the
Brian Solacy.
No, I think that, I think there was some incredible comments made by both consultants. And as John says, these are all things that we're gonna have to take into consideration, along with our own peer review.
Okay, Catherine Howe.
No comment at this time, thank you.
Okay. Given the time, I don't think we're going to discuss any conditions and waivers. We did receive information on the building height. We'll take that up on July twenty-seventh.
Sarah.
Yes, Mr. Pucci.
Hi, good evening. George Pucci from Town Council's office. Nice to see you again tonight. I I just wanted to just mention to kind of orient the board, which I'm sure you're already fairly oriented, on that entire discussion about the vernal pools and the habitat and all of that. I just want to reiterate to the board that you're viewing this in the context of acting in the shoes of the Conservation Commission with regard to your local bylaw and regulations. So your bylaw and regulations treat the vernal pool in that hundred foot buffer as an actual resource area, as opposed to a wetlands protection in that hundred foot buffer as an actual resource area, as opposed to a Wetlands Protection Act, which ties the buffer to bordering vegetated wetland. So I just want to just give you that basic kind of overview at this point, kind of agreeing a little bit with, with the point that Attorney Legere had made about orienting you as to how you're, the framework by which you're looking at this. So as opposed to looking at it like a blanket waiver, oh, we're waiving the hundred foot resource area to a hundred foot buffer to a vernal pool, which is also a resource area under the bylaw. You want to look at it in terms of location specific to the site and take in all the information that's been presented to you in terms of number one, is a waiver even needed? Is there something that encroaches on that resource area related to the project? If not, you don't grant a waiver for that. And then you're looking at a location specific request, like say the roadway. You will look at the roadway and you will say, you know, whatever vernal pool that is, that's in, you know, so much feed of buffer zone, you examine that point. And if you're inclined to, to consider a waiver with regard to that, you would grant a conditioned waiver only to the extent needed for, you know, square footage in terms of the roadway or however you end up conditioning that. So I, I just wanted to emphasize that to the board that just in terms of a kind of a mental model to look at this, you're thinking about, all right, we're applying performance standards with regard to resource areas under the local bylaw. At the State Wetlands Protection Act will be covered by the Conservation Commission. They still have to, the applicant still has to comply with state law requirements. So your focus is on those, the jurisdictional areas of the local bylaw and regulations when you either determine number one, whether or not a waiver is even needed with regard to location specific places on the site. Number two, if it is, whether, whether and to what extent a waiver should be granted or in the alternative, whether you want to consider denying a requested waiver as to a specific location. That's kind of how you look at this. There was one part on this that's very important. What, what I would recommend as opposed to, and, and I'll, I'll own this recommendation to you. I had made the recommendation to the board that you don't have your peer review consultant comment on third party consultants, but that would be something that is not typically done. You would typically need the assent of, of the developer and then the developer would pay for that additional peer review. So that is not something you would typically engage in. It's for the applicant to respond to third party consultants to the extent the applicant thinks they need to rebut it. And then, but one recommendation I would make for third party consultants as opposed to peer review of, of their comments is I would tie their comments. And I would recommend very strongly, obviously, before the close of the public hearing, you know, waiver specific. Are, are there recommendations that those third party consultants are making to the board with regard to requested waivers that they're urging you to deny that waiver? And if so, why? What was the science that they're urging that on you? And anybody commenting on the project, that would behoove them to do that. You want to look at telling the board, are, are you telling, are you asking the board to deny the project in its entirety? Or are you asking the board to deny waivers with regard to specifics under the bylaw and regulations? If it's the latter, it would behoove them to specify what they think should be denied and, and the basis for that proposed denial. So I recommend that they submit that to the board in writing as part of this, you know, while the public hearing is still open. And then you don't have to waste all the public hearing time on that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. With that, I think I will make a motion to continue the public here.
Madam Chair, can I just ask what my homework is or what our homework is as the applicant? For the next hearing, I want to make sure we're prepared and invite the appropriate personnel. So if the board could just reiterate what you'd like to cover at the next hearing.
Well, I think at the next hearing, we're going to go back around on everything, look at what's been committed to in the various peer reviews and discuss mitigation. There were some commitments made regarding mitigation in the traffic study. And look at conditions and waivers.
Okay, thank you.
It should be a regrouping session.
Understood, okay.
Okay. I make a motion to continue the public hearing of the application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, to construct 136 unit apartment complex for which the Mass Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16th, 2021 at School Street Assesses Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27th, 2021, to be continued to Wednesday, July 27th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Via Zoom contingent on the legislative, legislative approval of extending the open meeting law, allowing remote meetings. But if the legislation expires, the meeting will be in person in Room 5 of Town Hall or other town facilities and accommodate the crowd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds. Any discussion? Take a vote. John?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Catherine?
Sarah, it's James. You missed me again.
Oh, James, sorry. Oh, I've missed you many times, huh? We'll move on to administrative matters. We have three sets of minutes.
I'll say good night, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci.
Thanks a lot. Talk to you soon.
And I, I want to tell the board on the minutes that I discovered that in the first paragraph, there were two things misstated. And it's that I opened the continued public, instead of reading, open the public hearing on the 40B continued application. It should be open the continued public hearing on the 40B application. And the date it was filed with the town clerk was September 27th, not September 26th. And all my agendas have stated the 27th. I've asked Gail to correct that on any of the past minutes. So it's correct on the record. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Any changes to any of the minutes? We have what, May 11th? May 25th? What was it, June 8th?
Yes.
Sarah, this is Catherine. I just have a question, really. It's with these embedded PDFs, are those actually accessible? Like, I, I'm wondering if we should attach them as exhibits instead of embedding a PDF? Because I'm, I'm not sure that that's going to be accessible, you know, sort of down the line to people pulling minutes, if those links are still going to work or whatever.
Gail, can you speak to that? Gail Hunter, Gail Hunter. She's on. Gail Hunter.
Sarah, this is Catherine. I don't see her on my list of people.
I don't see her either.
She's on the phone, the 207 phone number.
Oh.
207 area code.
Yep, I do see the 207.
Okay, we can double check with her. It's
Yeah.
My understanding that it's set up on the Town Hall website so that it links, but I don't know the mechanics.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, that these are years or whatever, however long down the road someone needs to access these, it still works, whatever it is. Or if not, if questionable, then we should attach it as an exhibit. That's my only comment. Otherwise.
Okay. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 11th, May 25th and June 8th?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian seconds. Any discussion? Let's take a roll call vote. John?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Sean? Brian?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Thank you. So at the next meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping we can go back through everything and figure out, start figuring out conditions and look at all of the environmental waivers and determine whether or not they're required, what we want to do. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
I'm going to attempt to organize it, but we'll see how far I get. I know it's an enormous amount, enormous volume of stuff.
Sarah, is that meeting on the 27th?
Yes.
That will be our last open meeting, Sarah?
That will be, as of now, that's the last public hearing meeting.
Yes.
But then we can have open meetings after that with no input from the public or from anybody.
Just an open meeting. They're invited, but they cannot comment.
Right. They can listen in, but they can't comment. And the applicant can't comment.
Understood.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
For those kind of open meetings with no comment, will the applicant even be in attendance?
It's an open meeting, he can attend.
But do we know that he'll attend? I mean, or is that?
I don't know. I have no idea. I, I have no idea. I don't know whether he wants to hear us discussing the conditions or just kind of wait till the draft is done. Goes to him. I'm, I'm kind of envisioning that, you know, a draft is written and then we'll go through the draft. I'm relying on the attorneys for helping with a lot of the details, but we need to give them the framework of what we want. Okay. And we have a site visit Monday at 5:30, but it's at Two Wood Home, not Four. We don't have authorization to enter the property of Four Wood Home.
Really?
Yes.
Means contention.
But we can see the fence from the Two Wood Home side. They're the ones that filed the application.
Sorry, Sarah, when is this site visit?
Monday at 5:30.
Monday, the 18th.
On, on Wood Home.
Next Monday, this coming Monday. At 5:30.
I'm going to be in California next week for, just so you know.
Oh, so you won't be at the regular CBA meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Is everyone else going to be there? Because Catherine may recuse herself from the Wood Home road.
Yes.
I will attend the meeting, but I will likely not.
And we have the remand of the decision at 151 Bridge.
And I think, Sarah, you agreed with my decision to, that it would not be necessary for me to stand down on that.
If, yeah, if you don't know the people.
I don't know the people. They're directly behind my house, but I can't even, I can barely see their house. And I certainly
The fence is the other side.
I can't see it from my house. And so I felt that it would be appropriate to attend on that basis.
Okay, yep. I think that's fine.
Yeah, just to be clear to everyone, it's not a proximity thing with me. It's that I've been involved previously with the parties in this debate and so it, you know, I don't know that it would be appropriate for me to vote on it, so.
So we may
It's not like I'm closer than you or anything. It's no, it's not, for me, it's not a proximity issue is all I'm trying to clarify, Jim. I think I have no problem with, I think you're fine, in my opinion.
Okay.
But if John is there and I'm accused, we, what, what does that mean?
That means we have five, which is what we need.
Okay, great, then.
If Jim participates. Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Take a roll call vote. John?
Yes, approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Sean? Brian?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah. Good night.
Thank you, Sarah. Good night.
Good night. Thanks, everyone.